Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting at the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, September 21st. All three commissioners are present. I will begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. All right, and with that, we will move on to our department updates. Good morning, Ms. Kelly.
Good morning. We are currently at a medium CDC COVID-19 community level. Those at high risk of getting very sick may choose to wear a high-quality mask to better protect themselves. The Health Department has free COVID-19 tests available. You may walk in Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. to request tests to take home. The Public Health Clinic has COVID-19 vaccines available. Appointments can be made by calling 812-353-3244. IU Health Positive Link has administered 327 first doses and 78 second doses as of the end of last week for monkeypox. We continue to thank them for their dedicated community support efforts and diligent work.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Givens?
No.
Commissioner Jones? All right, thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, next, let's see if there's any other departments that have comments, an update for us. Okay, seeing none, we'll go back to our agenda for public comment. The public comment period is for items that are not on our agenda. Each commenter will have a total of three minutes to speak. At 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you will hear a tone to indicate that you have 30 seconds remaining to finish your statement. Again, this is for items not on our agenda, but the three-minute rule also holds for other agenda items. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, staff. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I have a pair of items I quickly want to run through. Two weeks ago, I commended this body for using their work session to restart talks with the city regarding expansion of the Monroe County Convention Center. While I'm unaware of a follow-up meeting at this time, I'm hoping the Commissioners can keep that momentum they created during that last discussion with representatives from the county council, Bloomington Common Council, and the city's mayor office. This effort ushered in that new era of intergovernment collaboration that will require your continued initiative. Time is of essence, as we previously outlined regarding the food and beverage tax possible sunset. Once again, we appreciate your due diligence and look forward to the next scheduled discussion. On a separate note, the chamber is hosting our Elect Connect on Monday, October 3rd, that's 5:30 at the Dimension Mill. We will have an opportunity for chamber members and the community at large to network with candidates and elected officials in our community in a non-stuffy environment, free of long speeches. We would appreciate all three of the Commissioners in attendance and any of the public wanting to meet candidates on the ballot and elected officials. There will be free appetizers and a cash bar to register. Just go to chamberbloomington/events. And on a third little note, there is still time to register to vote. The turnout for these off-year elections are rather low, so your vote counts even more than it would typically. So thank you for your time this morning.
Great, thank you. It looks like we have a public comment on, from a member of the Zoom audience, Guy Loughman. Can you bring him forward to speak, please? I know he's Monroe County resident.
Hi, am I on?
Yes, you are.
Great. I wanted to thank all three Commissioners for your attendance at the rally on the Courthouse Square and allowing that to go forward concerning the importance of health care, including abortion rights, for all of the Indiana residents. Of course, it's important to women, and of course, it's important to men. And I'm very pleased that we have Commissioners who stand up publicly for such an important matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loughman. Does anyone else have a public comment for items not on our agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Approval of minutes, please.
Move approval of the minutes from September 7th, 2022. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, edits, corrections?
I didn't see anything.
Okay, excellent. All those in favor approving the minutes for September 7th, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket accounts payable September 21st, 2022, and payroll September 23rd, 2022. Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. Accounts payable for September 21st, 2022 is $6,102,276.60. For payroll for September 23rd, 2022 is $1,727,615.89.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions, please?
No.
Comments or questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right, let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor approving the claims docket accounts payable September 21st, 2022, and payroll September 23rd, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Right. We did, I will note for the record, we did receive a report from the Treasurer. It is from August 2022. And now we will move on to new business, please.
Move approval of Effect TV Comcast agreement fund name election, fund number 1215, and an amount of $2,352.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Do we have Ms. Martin joining us via Zoom? Or someone from Elections? Can't see the panelists. Cannot see the panelists. Yeah, Mr. Cockrell.
If you want me to handle this, I can. We've reviewed these kind of agreements numerous times. This agreement is for the use of Comcast for, oh.
There she is.
There she is. I will let her take.
Great, thank you. Ms. Martin? You're muted.
Good morning. I truly was not tardy. I am in app this morning. This is the Comcast commercial that we put on. Well, Comcast puts it on for us on several channels. It tells about early voting and when it starts and how to register to vote. My political campaign speech here, please vote. We start voting on October 12th, early voting. You can register up until October 11th. We have a facility at 302 South Walnut Street. It's huge. There'll be a lot of parking. That's what this commercial will tell you about early voting and polling locations. And we've approved these before.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Givens?
I just wanted to remind everybody that this is to encourage folks and to improve our turnout, which really is important, as Mr. MG said.
Absolutely. Commissioner Jones?
I just want to mention that while this is absolutely right on our agenda in the packet, it indicated it was for the primary.
Oh, I am sorry. It's for the general. Forgive me.
Yeah, okay. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Okay, seeing none, we will come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the agreement with Effect TV Comcast signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of High Tech Crimes Unit MOU with Indiana University. Fund name, High Tech Crimes Unit, fund number 9159, in an amount of $253,488.17.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have our prosecutor, Ms. Oliphant, joining us. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. As the Commissioners know, I received a grant from the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council starting this year to establish and maintain a high-tech crime unit, and I am partnering with that project with Indiana University. This contract, this is an amendment to an existing memorandum of understanding. And the reason for this amendment is to give the director a pay raise so that we are more competitive with other units across the state. And we don't run the risk of investing in his training only to have him leave us. And it also allows for us to lease a car through the IU Fleet System. I just want to highlight that IU is contributing a lot of resources, well above what our grant award in this case is. So they've truly been good partners, and it is my hope that the Commissioners will approve this pay increase for the director and a vehicle for his use. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Givens?
No, I'm glad that we're doing this kind of work.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm just pleased if we're able to hold on to someone, keep them with us.
Yeah, the gentleman currently in the position is very talented, and I'm excited about what he brings to the unit.
Yeah, this is such a great initiative, and it's actually nice to remind the public that this grant is going to really help us out a lot in our community and surrounding communities. So thank you again for working on this initiative.
Thank you.
All right, let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the MOU with the High Tech Crimes Unit, Indiana University signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move approval of Resolution 2022-26, Highway Surplus Property.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Mr. Kreider joining us, who's our Building and Fleet Manager. Good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Facilities and Fleet Manager. This request is to approve the declaration of items for surplus. The retirement forms submitted are items from two departments that include broken and incomplete furniture pieces from the Highway Department and Courts, also Highway Department vehicles, a tractor and trailer that have been replaced with new. Those items will go to auction. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I just want to make one.
First, yes.
I just want to make sure it's on the record that one of the retirement forms for the judge's chair that says chair is broken and cannot be fixed has an item value of zero. But when they check the no box on the value of the item exceed the cost to auction the item, I believe that check on that no box is incorrect. That should be yes, that the value of the item does not, if I'm reading that correctly.
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Just clarify that that's not going to be sold.
Okay, got you. Thank you so much. All right.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Comments, questions, Commissioner Givens?
No, I'm glad for the clarification.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Okay, I don't have any questions either. Thank you for taking care of this. Let's see if there's any comments from the public. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2022-26 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, please.
Move approval of Bloomington Economic Development Commission Agreement. Fund name, County General, fund number 1,000, in an amount of $30,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
And I would just note that the Agenda cover sheet does say Bloomington Economic Development Commission, but the agreement says Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. So that's really the agreement.
Yeah, it is really the corporation. Yes, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff McKim here, representing the county council. My colleague, Counselor Crossley, is also attending by Zoom. And we also have Jen Pearl, the President of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, or BEDC, in attendance as well. The county council included in its budget $30,000 to fund our partnership with the BEDC in supporting local economic development. The purpose of this MOU is to allow us to move forward in expending those funds. Now, why would we want to partner with the BEDC? First, BEDC is a nonprofit that works to foster conditions for prosperity across all of Monroe County. It does this by convening partners around strategic initiatives and supporting employment growth. It sits possibly uniquely at the intersection of public, private, nonprofit, and educational sectors. And as such, we believe that the county is a key stakeholder and partner. Second, we want to support a holistic approach to economic development strategy, as evidenced by the Economic Vitality Project, BEDC policy memos, events, et cetera. These efforts continually seek ways to better support and create action to address community needs, such as quality of life, housing, better-paying jobs, and workforce. Third, we believe that this is an investment in future-focused, good-paying jobs and keeping our local economy resilient. It takes focused, coordinated work to cultivate these types of jobs, and the Catalent expansion is one recent example. So what does the county get from this partnership? One, BEDC staff time on projects that impact quality county employment and wage growth. Projects in recent years included expansions at Catalent, Bloomington Rehab Hospital, Phoenix, Tassus, Provali, et cetera. This augments the work of county legal staff, as we don't currently have a dedicated economic development department. Two, information to help guide decisions-making on economic development, such as the BEDC March memo, the ARPA memo, updates on the state of the local economy. Third, promotion of Monroe County to internal and external audiences, like the excellent Y Monroe County video series. Number four, and perhaps most importantly, a county voice and seat on the table ensures that the BEDC can and will expand upon and tailor their work to county needs. For example, county employment zones, airport support, and ensuring that we preserve rural areas while growing our economy. As is often said, the county is not the city. And participating as an active partner in the efforts of the BEDC is the best way to ensure that we are able to foster local prosperity while preserving what is important and distinctive about Monroe County. Thank you very much for listening. I'm here to answer questions. Jeff Cockrell can also answer questions about the MOU itself. And we have Jen Pearl here, who can answer any questions about the BEDC in general and its activities with Monroe County. Thank you.
Thank you. Did somebody, did you want to speak, Ms. Pearl?
If you'd like to hear, certainly welcome to. I thought if you had questions, she would be here to be able to.
Well, we can go to questions. That's fine. Yep, so you can go to questions. Commissioner Givens?
Well, we already have a seat at the table because we pay for memberships, correct? So this is not paying for our seat at the table.
This is paying to be a partner and to have the county, really, the county's voice, her, not just one of many. But, you know, one of the, one of the general concern, and Ms. Pearl may want to address this as well. But, you know, one of the concerns, like I mentioned before, BEDC sits at the intersection of nonprofit, public, and private and educational sectors. And the public sector needs to be a big participant, a big stakeholder, a big partner in these activities. If we don't, then, you know, there's always the risk that the BEDC is driven more by their private sector members. And we don't want that. We want them to be, to continue to be able to be in a position where they're able to balance the various interests of the community. And so that's why I believe that, and the county council believes, that having that kind of partnership is particularly important. And Ms. Pearl, do you want to also add?
Good morning. First, I wanted to say thank you so much for considering this. And also, thank you so much for all of the county participation in BEDC initiatives so far. As Mr. Cockrell, or sorry, Mr. McKim had said, what we do is really sitting at the intersection of these sectors. Our membership is currently a majority private sector. We sit at the intersection of these sectors and try to work a great deal with all of our local governments, with our higher education institutions, et cetera. Economic development at the end of the day is about bringing people together to improve our community as a place to live, work, and play. The other thing that's really important to us is that any jurisdiction that we're working with, our activities are tailored to that place. So, for example, knowing that the county has certain priorities in what it wants to advance and preserve in the community, that is something that needs to be considered very heavily in anything we're supporting. For example, the employment zones, the airport, et cetera. And so we appreciate and look forward to opportunities to deepen collaboration with the county.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yes. I still contend that this doesn't bias us, that we already have a seat at the table. But a couple of different things, and Ms. Pearl has heard me say this already. I don't believe in unlimited growth, partly because we don't have the water supply to support that. We're already on the third sort of water source for our area. And so I think we have to be mindful about just unlimited growth, for one thing. I also would like to know if this is just a one-time charge that goes to supporting the Economic Vitality Project. If not, what exactly this money will help to support sort of as a line item or line items in your budget?
I'll address the question about growth. We do not believe in growth for the sake of growth. Economic development has changed a great deal over the last few decades. Whereas if you go back to the 70s and the 80s, it was like, go get a building, put them in. Get a company, put them in a building, et cetera. Economic development is about creating great places to live, work, and play. If you pave over paradise, that doesn't help anyone. And it's also focused on fostering conditions for prosperity. That's actually reflected in the areas of focus for the Economic Vitality Project, which are workforce, quality jobs growth, housing, quality of life, which I should actually say, we've talked about kind of preserving local resources. A number of our members have really emphasized the need to protect, you know, the lake, et cetera, because that's, that's an important part of our community, public health, et cetera, as well as making sure that we're balancing land use. We're getting ready to actually release a series of white papers over the next week or two from the Economic Vitality Project. And one of the themes that came through is, hey, we need to balance preserving what we have while also creating smart growth for the future so that we're ready for whatever changes in the economy may happen and whatever needs we may have for the future of our citizens.
And I'll address the question about EVP. This is not a contribution towards the EVP. This is a general contribution towards the operations of the BEDC for 2022. We, the county council appropriated this money, actually not as an additional, but explicitly in our, in our budget that we set in 2021 for 2022. And so it is for the, the work of the BDC in furthering the interests of the county and local economic development. But it is not tied to or a sponsorship of the EVP.
Commissioner Jones?
Well, I don't really have any questions. I would like to comment that 20 years ago, I was vehemently against the BEDC. At that time, they were trying to insert McDonald's into the middle of neighborhoods. Basically, if it meant more building, it was automatically a good thing. I know that the BEDC has changed their focus quite a bit. And I really like the fact that quality of life has become something that they're taking into consideration. That is something that affects all of us. I also, well, I think we need to remember that citizens in the city are also our constituents. So even if at times it seems that things are directed more toward the city, it's still relevant to us. And I generally feel that it's better to know what is going on, what's planned. That allows us to have a lot more influence on how things go forward in the future and make sure that the county's needs are truly taken into consideration. I would also like to say something I've forgotten. If I think of it later, I will. Oh, I'm sorry. Isn't that how it always goes? I do think that because this is an issue that the county council cares about deeply and really wants to see put forward, that that is something that we should take into consideration.
Great, thank you. So I guess my big question is, how is this different from a membership? Because we have a membership.
I'm sorry.
How is this different from a membership?
Well, and I'm also going to let Ms. Pearl address this from the broader BEDC perspective. From our, from my perspective and the county council's perspective, we are one member among many members. But if we're trying to balance those different sectors that we talked about, public sector has to have a really big, has to have a really big seat at the table. We need to, we need to make sure that the BEDC is able to and does take the, the needs and plans of the, of the public sector very, very seriously. And that they know that they have the backing of local government when dealing with the, the private sector as well. So I think that's, that's probably the main reason that, that the county council has for, for supporting that. And we believe also that we, that I think this is something that the Commissioners have said many times before, that we are different from the city. And, you know, our, our active participation as partners, not just as one member, as a member of many, means that we can be kind of, we can be more demanding about, about we want what we want from them.
Thank you so much. In addition to what was just mentioned, this enables us to grow our capacity for serving the county, you know, with as many projects as possible and within the county's needs. We have a great working relationship with Mr. Cockrell, as well as, you know, members of the Commissioners and county council. There's actually no lack of work to be done, as we're really finding out from the Economic Vitality Project. So this will help us to be able to sustain and also grow our capability for doing more of what's needed for the community in the future, as determined by everyone coming to the table.
So it's a different seat, but it is an ex officio seat. So I guess, I guess I still don't see the difference. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand how, how this changes our current relationship with the BEDC. It doesn't.
Like I said, we can, we have the ability to be more demanding of them. If there's something that we absolutely need the, the BEDC to pay attention to or perspective that we really need them to, to take into account, we just have, we have more leverage as a, as a partner than just one member out of many.
And just to note for the record that the Economic Vitality Project is listed as part of this agreement as well. I'm, I'm really hesitant because we're often told when we come to council that there isn't money for things that we feel the county needs. And that it makes it hard for me to be willing to say, well, sure, let's do this because we're going to come back and hear something about how the council cannot afford or Monroe County cannot afford. I also don't like the fact that this is a year-to-year, open-ended agreement. I also don't like the fact that this is a year-to-year, open-ended agreement because it says, the terms of the agreement through December 31st, 2022, which is fine, but then it says it automatically renews. And granted, it's, it is September now. And I don't think it would be fair to say, give us a report in January, you know, if we do this. So the only way I would support this is to do a trial run to see what really changes in a year. And I would be okay with moving the expiration date to the end of September 2023 with no renewal unless we, you know, we would have to actively renew it. And that would require, yes, a report. How is this month, you know, how is this focus on Monroe County? Do we feel like we have more of a voice when we're there? You know, I just don't, that's the only way I can support this, and I don't know how my colleagues feel about that.
Well, I, I would support that, and especially because I still haven't heard how the money will be spent and, and what, what it does worse. I, I attend the B E D C meetings. I am there. I know that they are working hard on a lot of different things that do impact Monroe County and, and the residents. So I'm, I'm, I'm not against supporting them, but I feel like we already pay $10,000 for the two memberships that we, that we have. And so, yeah, I, I'm much more comfortable with making this a one-time, one-year approval and then going back to, to review what's, what's happened.
Okay. Mr. Cockrell?
I would just point out that this is, this document is not automatically renewable. It is renewable only upon renewed, negotiated, or extended upon its expiration by mutual written consent of the parties. So there would have to be a formal action to extend this beyond the, the current term.
Where did I see that? I saw something in.
Well, there is a section in it that says it could be extended pursuant to a section. And then I just read the section so that the.
That's the, okay.
The extension would have to be through a formal writing, not.
Okay. Well, and I don't, and I don't think the deliverables are fair then because it says prior to January 31st, 2023, the E D C will provide the county a report regarding the status and accomplishments of each item. I think it's too short of a timeframe, to be fair. So can we make that the end of June? Is that the end of June 2023 instead of January?
I mean, in terms of, I, I would not be able to weigh in on sort of county requirements for this. And we are certainly able to provide reports at any time. We actually do quarterly reports to on our activities that are posted on the website. So we are able to report at any time.
Right. What do you all think?
I think that one of the problems that we deal with in county government is that it's generally very poorly understood. And I think this could give us an opportunity to make it more clear to the people who are anxious to do things for the community but don't always understand the county position on things. So I think there would be some value in this, but I do like the idea of it being extended, of, of the deadline being extent, well, the end time.
Yeah.
Being extended.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So the, the $30,000 would cover from now through the end of September. Instead of $30,000, I think the payments need to be revised, but.
I do believe that the county, I mean, in, in the County Council Budget Work Sessions, we have already explicitly placed another $30,000 for 2023 in the County Council Budget. So I, I don't know that I, I like the idea of pushing it all the way out to September. The idea was that this is a 2022 appropriation and project. And the B E D C has been acting as partner at, with full knowledge that the County Council had put in an appropriation for, for the, the partnership. So, I mean, I could see, you know, wanting a report maybe. What about first quarter, you know, after the first quarter of, of 2023, but.
So we haven't had this partnership seat at the table bigger than a membership. We'll have it for three months for $30,000. I mean, to me, it seems not right. And, yeah, that's, that's just my take on it. I don't know how my colleagues feel. I mean, we could revise this, get this revised and maybe even have it at our work session today. But I'm, I'm hesitant to do because this is then not, this is a one-year. And yes, the count, the council in budget work sessions has indicated, yes, for 2023. This doesn't take us to 2023. This is supposed to be for this year. And I just don't think it's fair to say to the B E D C, give us, you know, the sum total of how things have changed in three months. I just don't know that that's fair to them and to us, so.
Well, it's my understanding that B E D C had already written this into their budget for the whole year based upon the, the County Council having this. And so it would, it would seem reasonable to say, okay, give us your year-end report, show us how this $30,000 impacted and improved the lives of the members of Monroe County in general, and then make a decision and see that the report they give us on January 31st, 2023, and then make a determination as to whether or not that was a good investment.
Okay.
I think that's a reasonable approach.
Do we need to revise this and come back? Or can we just go with our verbal motion for an amendment? Mr. Cockrell?
What, what was the, the amendment?
We haven't, we haven't had an amendment yet.
No, but you just said what it was, so go ahead.
Well, no, I, I said, we, we've already, it's already written into this M O U that we would have a deliverable, that they would provide a report to us on January, by January 31st of 2023, so that we could see how this money has impacted. I think it's already in the M O U, but that certainly we would, it would be the understanding that we wouldn't move on anything next year without seeing something that was very solid in support of how it made quality impacted things within Monroe County, benefited the citizens and the taxpayers that are supporting this.
Yeah, it is the taxpayers who are supporting this, but that's the, that's the key.
Yeah, I, I would certainly agree with what Commissioner Givens said. If we could have a report at that time. What I would expect to see from the report is, while I did just say that all city citizens are represented by us, they're also represented by a whole lot of other people. Whereas county citizens only have their county representatives. So I would want to hear particularly what has happened outside the city limits that really benefits the county. And I also want to say that while I am willing to support this, I think that one of the things that needs to be done is figure out a way to have a viable community that is not dependent on growth. Growth cannot go on forever. It just can't. There isn't enough for that to happen. So we need to start looking in a different direction. Even if it's called sustainable growth, it's not truly sustainable.
That's a good point. Okay. Yeah, I just feel like we are, I'm concerned because we are spending $30,000 for this year. It's September. We haven't been a partner with this $30,000 seat at the table all year. The money will go to B E D C. So, but let's take, go ahead and take public comment. T S D, can you expand the Zoom screen for us? Because it's a. Thank you. And we could see who's, yes, thank you.
Hello again, Commissioners. This is Christopher M G from the Greater Bloomington Chamber in Commerce. I'm here today to support this, this agreement as it currently states. Along with the Chamber, the B E D C is an essential component to sustainable growth and quality of place in this community. The E D C continues to work tirelessly to enable the retention and expansion of industries here. Their team is invaluable in shepherding the recent Canlin expansion that invested $350 million in this community with 1,000 jobs at $32 an hour. Their Kickstarter program was fundamentally Kickstartered the entrepreneur movement here that cultivated in the Dimension Mill, providing the largest startup ecosystem in the state. The Chamber looks forward to collaborating with them and their Economic Vitality Project. This county-wide endeavor will look at our existing efforts and address those gaps in the economic development strategies. While we both have the Bloomington namesake, you must remember Bloomington is Monroe County and Monroe County is Bloomington. The E D C looks to enhance the entire community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
T S D, could you please put the captions back on?
Thank you. I didn't notice it. We have, uh, Metro County Counselor Ms. Crossley joining us. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. Can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay. Good morning. Happy Wednesday and happy 21st day of September. It's Earth, Wind &amp; Fire Day. So, excuse me. I definitely want to come in and express my support and gratitude to Counselor McKim and Ms. Pearl for their work on this. And I strongly support this and urge for our Commissioners to do the same as well. I previously had a chance to sit on in the meetings for the B E D C, and I see the work that is vital and necessary that they are doing and would love to continue to work with this. The work of the B E D C is to foster and implement community needs such as better quality of life, housing, and other needs related to the economic development of Bloomington. You know, we've heard today several times, and the previous speaker just mentioned, you know, we always hear Monroe County isn't Bloomington, or not like the city. But in ways, we are definitely different. But the needs that we have that I just addressed out or earlier are the same, such as quality of life, housing. All of those things are no different than in Monroe County as in Bloomington as well. And some of our constituents, as we are elected officials and leaders of Monroe County, some of our constituents are a part of the city, and it makes sense to partner with the E D C. I thank you for your time and I strongly urge you to approve this.
Thank you, Councilmember Crossley. Is there anyone else who wishes to offer public comment? Okay, are we ready to vote? Sure. All those in favor of supporting the agreement with the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation signify by saying aye.
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 And I'm going to abstain. So it's 2-0-1.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of Bloomington Seal Coating and Paving Retainer Agreement. On name, county general, fund numbers 1,000 and 1179 in an amount not to exceed $30,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Ms. Whitmer joining us from Parks. Good morning.
Good morning. This is a retainer agreement for Bloomington Seal Coating and Paving, not to exceed $30,000. It is to crack fill mill, patch, tack coat, pothole fix at Cars Farm Park, Cars Farm Greenway, thermal pipe greenway. And if we have any money left over, if we need to next year, limestone greenway.
Right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Givens?
I appreciate the fact that this is sort of a proactive move on your part. Thank you.
Well, I do want to warn you, we might come back with another retainer agreement next year if we find more problems.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
That's a good, good plan for maintenance. See if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Bloomington Seal Coating Paving Retainer Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Move approval of agreement with Patriot Engineering. On name to be determined in an amount of $7,700.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, this is a, and the next item is about the Fulton Pike area as well. This is to do some, some borings into the, into that area. There are 15 borings that are going to occur, and this is just to help analyze the, the, what kind of structures and things that can go on that, check the soil samplings, just to make sure that what we buy, we can, we can build what we anticipate to build.
Great. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Givens?
No, it sounds like we're moving to the next stage of testing here.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I think, I just think this is very important. It's critical that we make sure that we can really use this land the way we want to before we actually buy it. And this is one of the steps that will tell us whether or not we can do that.
I don't have any questions either. I'm glad we're moving forward on this. I appreciate the due diligence. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium and then. Seeing none, we will come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the Patriot Engineering Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of the Resolution 2022-24, Approval of Issuance of Local Income Tax Revenue Bonds.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, and, and this will kick off the council's discussion on, on how to pay for property that we just talked about, about doing soil borings on it. Now, I will just note that when you look at this and other ordinances, we do, and what the council will look at, we do not actually name the property. We say that the property is going to be used for correctional facilities and other related facilities, you know, language like that, because we are going through this process to determine whether this property is correct. But, but they also allow us to utilize the funding for design and other types of work that we need to do in order to get whatever property we use in shape. That is not to say we don't plan to use the Fulton Pike property, but we still have to go, we're working with the city to go through their rezon process, and that's a contingency in the agreement. So I just want to, want to point out that while this is focused on that agreement, if, if for some reason, one of these reports, the previous report comes back poorly and says this is not the, then there, we could still utilize this money for that project, albeit potentially on a different side.
Comments, questions, Commissioner Givens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
I'm just happy to be moving forward quickly.
So my question is more philosophical, I guess. So a, a, a band is a bond anticipation note, which obviously we need to do. What if it turns out to be a different property and it's $12 million? Or a different property and it's $8 million? Are we still, is it still worthwhile to go forward this way? Because we don't know for sure that it's this property.
I, I guess my feeling is that we have deadlines in our purchase agreement that require us to close by the, the end of the year. And if we don't start this process now, we will have trouble utilizing this method to do that. I, I would say that, you know, I can answer that question to you. If it's over 12, it means that we would utilize this funding and then have to find funding.
Got it.
From a different source, potentially, and that's kind of the county's, council's dilemma. But I, I would look at rainy day fund or something like that to, to cover that gap. If it's 8 million, that's why we wanted a language that says, hey. If we don't spend it all on the actual property itself, what are the other things we can do with it? So we wanted to outline some other things we could utilize that money for in order to. Be able to spend it.
Great, okay, that's good. Thank you so much. Uh, no, and and I appreciate the fact that we do have to to move forward with this because we we don't have funding identified. To this, to this extent, but there is more work to do as we know from the previous. Uh, item on our agenda and we still have to go before the city plan commission as well, so there is more work to do. Okay. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2022 dash 24, approval to issuance of local income tax revenue bonds signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 30. Uh, next item, please.
Move approval of Monroe County Auxiliary Police Agreement. On name and number to be determined in an amount of $45 an hour.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second.
Yeah, this agreement is or allows us to utilize our Monroe County reserves for. For instances where we need additional security. That the $45 an hour rate is, is kind of what what was quoted and I think their standard rate for all. I. This all started when we were looking at our courthouse rental agreement and so our courthouse rental agreement reflects that $45 an hour and this is. Uh, to have a source where we could call in security and then be able to charge the. Users, the people running the building that amount, so we just wanted to make sure we had that firm trail. This isn't written specifically for that, so if there were other needs we needed to use them for, we could utilize this contract for them.
Right, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Givens?
No, but thank you for that extra clarification.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this is a very worthwhile project and I'm happy to see this going forward.
Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Monroe County Auxiliary Police Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 30. Next item, please.
Move approval of C S X T Railroad Agreement, on name, Vernal Pike Connector Road. Fund number 8165 in an amount of 103,400.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Um, I don't know that we have anyone. Here from a highway.
I I think Lisa is at a conference and so. I'm well aware of this and I'm more than happy to handle it.
Great, thank you.
One of the primary redevelopment commission projects that we're we are. Working towards getting bids, getting ready to let bids probably in the next. Six to eight months. It's also federal, has federal. Uh, funding associated is the connection of Vernal Pike to Gates Drive. Essentially. A sunrise greeting court. Extending that to those. And in order to do that, we have to have a bridge go over a railroad track. And this, this contract is with the railroad. So that they can assist us in utilize it. While the amount struck me as being high. It didn't strike anybody else as this was part of the original budget. And that that amount was was included in that, so that that was the my big surprise in this and and when I asked that question, they're like, well, it was included in our project cost, so.
Great, thank you. Comments, questions, Commissioner Givens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, um, do we have any idea of how long it might take the railroad to do this? They've really held up some other projects of ours.
I think that there are, I I can't promise anything when dealing with, but my understanding is that we are working with it and this is going to be a lot more on the construction side. And so I think they will have a more. Active need to be timely in that we're building something over their railroad and they can look at it when we're building it or not.
Okay, thank you. That makes sense. All right, uh, let's see if there's any um public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, we'll come back for a vote. All those in favor of the agreement with C S X T Railroad signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 30. Next item, please.
Move approval of Security Pro 24/7 Agreement. On name, Stormwater, on number 1197. In an amount of $60 per hour or $70 per hour.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, um, I believe. There you are. Good, I should say, I thought I saw you out there today. Good morning, Ms. Patonia, Stormwater.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kelsey Patonia, MS4 Coordinator with the Monroe County Highway Department. I'm here to present this contract with Security Pro 24/7 for flagging and traffic control services. It's to serve our crews on the roads to protect their safety as well as safety of the public. And by contracting out these services, I want to point out that it allows our crew members with C D Ls to focus on other tasks.
Excellent, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Givens?
I didn't understand why the amount was $60 per hour or $70 per hour. Would you explain that?
Yes. So they first offered um the services with one vehicle and two personnel. We requested the extra scenario in case it's needed. It's more than likely going to be the two. Two staff plus one vehicle, but we have some areas of the county where we have concerns for safety. Specifically, you know, very winding roads and when we ditch, our crews tend to get pretty far separated, so we wanted to have that option in case our crew supervisors felt it necessary.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
So we already have um contracts with other flagging groups, so this is just adding this in.
Our last contract, um, we actually ended that a few weeks ago, so this will be our only flagging contract moving forward.
Great, excellent. Great, thank you so much. Okay, and I know we've done, we've had Security Pro working with us on a lot of different things, so it's it's nice to have a local company doing this, so. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of approving Security Pro 24/7 Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 30 as the bell strikes 11.
Thank you.
So, uh, we do not have any appointments today. A couple of quick announcements. First, a big happy birthday to Lee Jones. Thanks for coming to work on your birthday. All right, um, just a reminder, we do have office hours available six times per month. And all you have to do is go to co-monroe.in.us. And click, look through the calendar, click on the dates and you will see six different times, daytimes, evenings. When you will be able to speak to one of us and we we invite you to do so. It's via Zoom. So please join us for that. We're interested in hearing your your. Thoughts, your ideas, your comments, your criticisms, whatever it may be, we'd love to hear from you. There is on the same website. A link to the survey for ARPA funding. This is the state and local portion of the American Rescue Plan Act funding. And we are still planning and hoping to have a joint meeting with the county council to hear from people. In the courthouse and via Zoom as well, but. You get a chance to rank the projects and let us know what you think is the most important thing or things that we should work on. Uh, and spend ARPA funding on. And that will be open through the end of September. Um, and again, a reminder, register to vote before October 11th. And early voting starts October 12th and that's coming up quick, so be sure that you're registered to vote. And is anything else?
Well, people can also apply already for absentee ballots, so that's something that is a form that is sent into our local clerk's office. So I encourage people to do that as well, if that is how they prefer to vote.
Right, thank you. Anything else?
No, there isn't.
Okay, great. Uh, we do have two work session items related to planning, so. Let's say we come back at 11:15. That work?
Good.
Great, we'll be back at 11:15 for our work session, uh, but until then we are adjourned. Thank you so much.